All right. I'd like to call it a order, the regular meeting is the Genoa Township Board of Trustees. It is Thursday, December 2nd, 2021, and the time is 6:30 PM. A full and accurate account of this meeting's audio recording can be found at www.joannowatwp.com. Present tonight, roll call.
Ms. Goodman.
Here.
Ms. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Here. All present, also present with us tonight is Russ Trabali, Deputy Police Chief, Corey Flieg, Deputy Director of Roads and Buildings and Grounds, Steve Gamble, Chief of Police. Linda Greco will be joining us later, Joe Ponzi, Fire Chief, Robert Matthews, Director of Roads and Buildings and Grounds, Joe Schaefer, Director of Zoning and Development, and Paul Wise, Township Administrator. At this time, I would like for Cameron, if Cameron, if you would rise and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cameron, that was probably the best lead we've ever had. All right, we're gonna rearrange our agenda a little bit this evening since we have some very important and exciting activities to take place, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Chief of Police, Steve Gamble. Steve?
Good evening, trustees. I respectfully request a resolution to hire Marissa A. Guyton as a full-time police officer effective December 6th, 2021. Ms. Guyton has successfully completed all portions of our hiring process to include polygraph, background, psychological, and medical exams. Ms. Guyton currently works as a trooper for the Ohio State Highway Patrol and has four years' experience. Based on this, I recommend hiring her at the B-step rate of $32.11 per hour is allowed in Section 14.2 of the Collecting Bargaining Agreement, which states the Board of Trustees may, in its sole discretion, hire an individual as a police officer at step B, in which case advancement to all succeeding steps shall be successive one-year intervals. And we've done similarly in the past when hiring officers with prior experience. So, request a resolution to hire Marissa Guyton.
All right, thank you, Steve. At that time, this time, I will move to hire Marissa Guyton as a full-time police officer effective December 6th, 2021, at the B-step rate of $32.11 per hour, per the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Yes, motion carries.
At this time, I would ask Marissa to step up here for the oath of office. If any family wants to take pictures, feel free to step up here, if you can anywhere you want to take pictures.
Pat, why don't you get the fire extinguisher out of the background? There you go.
This is not fire.
Yeah, uh-huh.
I'm Marissa Guyton.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
And Genoa Township.
And Genoa Township.
Delaware County.
Delaware County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During the continuous of my employment.
During the continuous of my employment.
So I will.
So I will.
Very good.
So, Marissa, who's going to be presenting you with your badge?
My wife.
Come on up. All right. Congratulations.
Would you like to introduce any of your family that are here? Marissa?
Um, I have a lot of family.
Yeah, that's all right. We have all night.
I have my wife, Lexi, my mom, Sherry, we have family friends, Donna, David, my grandma, Sandy, Grandpa Ralph, and Gray.
Welcome to our family.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All right. Next on the agenda, I respectfully recommend Officer Mike Sigmund and Officer Emily Brice be promoted to the rank of Police Sergeant, effective December 6th, 2021, at the A-step rate of $44.45 per hour. Both officers meet all eligibility, all the eligibility requirements for the position. On October 27th, I conducted an interview process with both candidates that consisted of a panel of three other individuals. All three of these individuals have 20-plus years of law enforcement and supervisory experience, they're all township residents, and they're all members of the Police Advisory Committee. The panel thoroughly interviewed each of the candidates, and at the end unanimously supported their promotions. Officer Sigmund and Brice have served the township for seven and six years respectively, and I am confident they will both make excellent supervisors.
Very good. This time, I will move to promote Officers Mike Sigmund and Emily Brice to the position of Sergeant with the Genoa Township Police Department, effective December 6th, 2021, at the A-step rate of $44.45 per hour, per the Collective Bargaining Agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion. I would just like to say congratulations to both of you. I've had the pleasure of hiring both of you and writing with both of you, and it's, you're well-deserved. Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Yes, motion carries.
I'd ask both of them to step up here and take the oath of office. You got all the time you want. You write the checks.
Very good.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a Sergeant.
As a Sergeant.
Genoa Township.
Genoa Township.
Delaware County.
Delaware County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During the continuous of my employment.
During the continuous of my employment.
So, who do you have putting your badge on you tonight? Come on up.
Very good.
All right, thank you. Last but not least.
All right, you ready? Hi, Mike Sigmund. Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
As a Sergeant.
As a Sergeant.
Genoa Township.
Genoa Township.
Delaware County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio. During the continuous of my employment.
During the continuous of my employment.
So I will.
And who do you have putting your badge on you?
My boys.
Okay.
Very nice.
You can bring Ben up here if you want.
Ben can bring you up, whichever is.
And can they turn around, we get a picture with everybody?
Poor Ben.
All right. You want the dog? Yep, sure. Stay up there with Ben just a second. So, at this time, I just wanted to bring up, with our canine handler, Mike Sigmund, getting promoted to Sergeant, I'm recommending changes to our current canine program. Our canine, Ben, is eight years old and has had some medical issues this year. Police canines generally work until the age of nine, so Ben is really at the tail end of his career, and it wouldn't be practical to put in the time to retrain him. Some of his medical conditions he's dealing with, including arthritis, missing multiple teeth. Ben has served the township very faithfully and very energetically, as you can see, over the years he's been here, and I think six years, Mike, six years they've been together. ORC 9.62 allows canine handlers the opportunity to purchase their canines for a dollar if the canine becomes disabled or too old to be fit for duty, which I think the latter applies. I believe Ben meets his criteria, criteria, and Officer Sigmund would like to buy Ben and have him live out his remaining days in comfort, and we've done this with our previous canine, so I would ask a resolution to allow Officer Sigmund to buy Ben for $1. Do you have anything you want to add, Mike? For the, concerning?
No, you know, um, he has had some, uh, Currie-Domond disease, he's lost a lot of his teeth, um, and they've had to rebuild his gums, um, he's had some, some belly issues. I know he's always in a good mood, but he, he's, uh, he's a little sore, I believe or not, but he used to be, but, um, but, uh, I would appreciate the honor to be able to take him with me.
Right with you. All right. This time, I will move to approve the retirement of Ben, our canine, and the purchase of Ben for $1 by Officer Mike Sigmund. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Yes, motion carries.
Have a happy retirement, Ben.
Yeah, we have. Yeah, I don't think, we gotta check.
Figure about how we're gonna change the canine program.
That'll be fine, that'll be fiscal, all right, we gotta all sign it. Well, I just want to say congratulations to our new officer and to, uh, Mike and Emily on their promotions, and to all of our officers. It's, uh, you know, Genoa Township is the only township in Delaware County with our own, uh, police department, and, um, it's just amazing that we have gotten the support from the residents that we do. I mean, it's not surprising, it's just wonderful, and I think they truly appreciate the service that you provide, and, um, and we do, and even in a community like Genoa Township, it's, um, every day is, you know, a risk, and so we appreciate that. So, thank you again for being here tonight. And, uh, you can stay, or you can leave, whatever, you're not gonna offend anyone. There's a kickback in the office, all righty. We'll take a little break here, just to allow everyone to... Exit? Got that, and we got that. I'm gonna move into you, Pat, fiscal report.
Yeah, sure.
Couple minutes, yeah. Okay, why don't we go ahead, Pat, our fiscal office, uh, report?
No problem. So, I only have a couple things. First, I'd, uh, ask for approval of the regular trustee, uh, meeting minutes of November the 4th, 2021, as presented to the trustees.
All right, I'll move to approve the following, um, November 4th, 2021, regular trustee meeting minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn. Mr. Gebhardt.
Yes, motion carries, minutes have been approved and accepted. Okay?
The only other thing I have is, um, I would ask for approval for a purchase order to pay the annual Bureau workers' compensation, um, premium, annual premium, of fifty-three, $58,738, which will...
Hold on, man.
Okay.
Just echoed right back on us.
Yeah.
Okay.
People get really excited when the fiscal officer, when the fiscal officer report, you know.
Oh, I know, yeah.
They get riled up.
All about it, we all want to hear it, too, so, uh, continue.
Again, I asked for approval of purchase order to pay the Bureau workers' comp, BWC, um, annual premium, um, and we, that's effective January 1st, 2022, for the, uh, year of 2022, 2022 workers' compensation.
All right, I'll move to approve the purchase order for Bureau workers' comp in the amount of $58,738, effective January 1, 2022, for the 2022 workers' compensation annual premium. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, um, do we know, is that a increase, decrease, the same?
Your, uh, your HR person's not here.
Right.
But I, and I don't have the figure in front of me, but I'm guessing it is less than last year's premium.
I think there's some rebates on this year's premium.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I know, compared to many years ago, it used to be in the $300,000 range, so...
Right.
Uh, the BWC has done their due process, along with our internal controls that we have for prompt and accurate reporting, so I believe it's slightly less.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, roll call.
Ms. Goodman.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt.
Yes, motion carries.
And then, the only other thing I have is, um, my boss, or my assistant, Donna, has advised me that, uh, spending will stop on the 17th, that Friday, we'll stop spending, so anything has to be taken care of for 2021, or, um, we'll take care of it by the 17th, we'll close the books, and then we'll be able to close everything out and reopen in January for next year. So, that'll be the cop day, which is typical, about two weeks.
Yeah, right.
In June, in December.
Nothing new there. Okay, anything else, Pat?
Nope.
All right, very good, thank you. Trustee comments? Connie?
I only have one comment, and as all of us know, this is Trustee Gebhardt's last meeting.
I didn't want to.
Well, shock of all time. I, I just want everyone to know what a pleasure it has been to work with you. I know that it's not always easy being a trustee, but you've weathered well, you've mentored a lot of folks along the way in 12 years, there's been new trustees coming on periodically, you've worked in the community, at our events, you've also been wonderful, um, working with young folks in Boy Scouts and other organizations, and you will be missed. I want to thank you from, personally, for all the help that you gave me in coming up to speed as a trustee, and, uh, I wish you well in this, what may be more fully retirement.
Might be, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I want to echo on Connie's sentiments, Carl, you've been a great boss for the, I don't even know what number trustee you were with, but I know Mark Antonez is number 13 coming in, so I appreciate all the support of the, all the services of the township that we've come and asked you for. I know a lot of times, it's a leap of faith to believe your department heads, but we have a good, good group of trustees right now, and, you know, we hate to see you leave, so we also have a big cake back there, since the police and fire always have cake, there's a very large cake for you to enjoy.
Got cake? I know what it takes.
I do think our two chiefs have, uh, something also.
I think Renee, we'll have Renee, yeah.
Thank you. I just want to echo, uh...
Serious business.
I don't know how serious, but, um, I just want to thank you for your service, 12 years, I mean, kudos to you, I don't know that I have 12 years in me, but, hey, and also, off-topic, um, my residence hour for December is gonna be here at the Township Hall on December 15th, from 6:30 to 7:30.
Thank you, thank you all, appreciate that.
Carl, on behalf of the Police Department, I just want to thank you for all the support. I've been here eight years, you've been here 12, and the progress we've made in that time, you just look at that new station, it's just unbelievable. We couldn't have done it without your support and all the support of the trustees over the year, so on behalf of the Police Department, I want to present you with this plaque, it says, Carl Gebhardt, the Genoa Township Police Department thanks you for your 12 years of service to Genoa Township and your support of the Police Department and all our public services, we wish you the best in your future endeavors, and appreciate your work in helping to further the Police Department and its ability to serve Genoa Township. Just want to give...
Thank you. Carl, I'd like to, uh, echo the same sentiments that have been said, um, you know, me being a new chief, but, uh, the deputy chief prior to that for about 10 years, and then also being here for, um, coming up on 28 total years for me. We just want to say thank you for the continual support that you showed, uh, not only the Fire Department and all of our public safety agencies, but all the departments within the township, and all the things that you did to help us to better serve, um, our community and our residents. So, we also have a plaque that says, um, the Genoa Township Fire Department would like to recognize your 12 years of service to the residents of Genoa Township and the support you have provided to the Fire Department and our public services. Thank you again for your support, and best wishes as you move forward. Thank you.
Hey, Carl, if I could say something real quick, I wasn't gonna say anything, but everybody else has, so I guess I should, too. So I've been here for the whole time you've been here, and, uh, it has been good, it's been, you know, it hasn't always been where we totally agreed on stuff, where we were able to come out of whatever discussions, and go down a path to make, make things what's best for the residents, whether it was with trustees, financially, or what have you, so, um, between this and county level and everything you've done with DNR and everything else, you've been quite the public servant, so I appreciate everything you've taught me.
Appreciate it, thanks, Pat, appreciate it all. Well, obviously, I, uh, am gonna miss, uh, the township, uh, the business, the, the folks I work with, but I'm not going anywhere, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna be one of those annoying residents that send emails complaining about this and that, and, um, but it's, uh, no, it's been a good, good ride, and, you know, as I indicated somewhere, I had made a commitment to my family, uh, my last campaign, that that was gonna be it, and, um, I wanted to hold true to that commitment, and I think, you know, there comes a time, I knew when it was time to retire, and I knew when it was time to step down as trustee, and, uh, you know, I think we all have that internal clock that says, you know, it's time to move on, something else, something new and different, and, um, uh, it's gonna be, Township's in great hands, uh, I've got all the confidence in the staff, I've got confidence in the trustees, and, um, you know, I think we have a, a good future ahead of us, so I just thank you for the opportunity, and, um, you know, move on, it's a great place to live, and we're gonna keep it that way, so thank you to all of you. Thanks. All right, let's get some work done. Proven purchase orders, we got that done, trustee comments, got that done, public comment? We got that done, too. All right. Like I said, moving right along, administration, Paul?
I believe we have a swearing-in this evening, another one, so Connie, you're up.
I'm up, huh? All right.
It is my honor. I, Connie Goodman. Do solemnly swear or affirm? That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio. I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of Township trustee in Genoa Township, Delaware County, State of Ohio during my continuance in office. So have we got it?
Another four, huh?
Another four. All right, very good.
Secondly, on the agenda, is a, I'd been asked by trustee Vaughn to at least get some preparation in advance for the reorganization where we set the fees and schedules and personnel in place. She asked that a discussion at least be had this evening concerning the rental fees and the deposits at the Township Hall. If you remember, or for the public's remembrance, the Township Hall is rented per evening at for $100 rent and $100 deposit. So I'll let the trustees discuss if you...
Yep. It was only brought to my attention by a resident that now that we have this nice new facility, we might consider increasing the deposit, only because I've been informed that we've had some damages in the past, and I'm not sure that $100 would cover any damage done in this room. I mean, we pay township staff to replace it, so those are hourly rates that we're paying our own employees plus the material. Residents would get it back anyway. It just is more covering us in the event that something happened to the room.
I've said before that I think that the rental for this hall is pretty cheap, and the deposit is clearly not enough to cover some of the damage that we've had in the past. I would be in favor of raising both the rent and the deposit, and of course the deposit, as long as there's no damage, it comes back or any portion thereof. I also think that it's important to remember that we have to staff the weekends when this is rented, Saturday and Sunday, so that that, depending upon what Bob's folks can do, it could incur overtime, so we have to cover those expenses, too. So I think that this is a good topic for discussion, and I would have no problem proposing higher rates.
Paul, in the rental agreement, is there anything that talks about, I mean, I know the damage it was done a while back was significant. Were we able to collect anything other than the deposit, and do we have language in the agreement?
Yes, we did have a situation where the parents came in and rented the room on behalf of their high school children, and it turned out that, I'll just tell you the scenario, the children subcontracted and rented the room out as a rave or a party, took admission at the door, and were, had marijuana and alcohol internal. So there was a lot of damage that we were able to get a total of those, and they were, with the assistance of their parents, they paid it off in full. So with the threat of having a prosecutor in your background and ready to send letters, it does expedite those types of claims, so. But it's hard. If they refused and just walked away, then we would have to kind of deal with that on our own or through the courts, so.
Okay. I mean, is this an issue that, I mean, we don't need to take action tonight. I mean, this is normally something that's done at reorg where we approve fees, and is that your intent to do it?
Yeah, just kind of have the discussion prior so that we can be thinking about it before.
If any amounts could be, let us know. That way the forms could be ready for that, for that meeting. Did you have any figure in mind, any of you?
Well, I kind of thought about this, and I would suggest that we raise the rental to $200 and the deposit to 250. They're going to get, assuming no damage, they'll get the 250 back. The 200 is really still reasonable for a facility of this quality.
I, whatever the new board wants to do, I personally have a little bit of a concern about going too high. I mean, it is a taxpayer-funded building. The improvements have been nice, and they are nice, but I do think we have to, you know, be careful of not getting too out of hand on that. And I don't know, you know, if there's going to be discussion regarding the other facilities, the parks and the pavilions and stuff. I know it's a little different scenario because, you know, it's not the same, but I think we have to, you know, be reasonable, but it's whatever the new board wants to do, so at that point.
Yeah, I'm in favor of increasing the deposit. I also feel this is a taxpayer-funded facility, so I don't want it to go too high because the taxpayers pay for it anyway. But I do want to incur or recoup some of the cost it costs us to rent this facility.
So you're comfortable with what Connie suggested?
If you think that's too high, maybe 150.
Yeah, 150 I would be more comfortable with. Yeah, rent 150, and then I like the $250 deposit. I just think nowadays, I mean, what are you going to fix for $100? Not much.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
And then moving on, Renee also asked me to start prompting a discussion about the demolition at the old police station. I've given it some thought. With Chief Ponzi, we talked a little bit about probably working it in a couple steps. The first step would be to relocate the utilities and hire some experts to quote us on removing, say, gas line, cutting off gas line, removing electrical, replacing electrical, et cetera, so.
We probably have four areas of concern within that building. Three of those are the utilities. All the utilities come into the old police station and then run across the apparatus bay and then come into our existing fire station. So that's the electric, water, and gas. So those are the three utilities that we'd have to deal with. And luckily, Battalion Chief Johnson is here tonight. He may be a little bit more in tune than I am, but we also have some infrastructure, phone lines, IT cables that run through that building, out through that building, and over to Bob's building, that we would have to identify and either abandon and rerun in an appropriate manner. But that would be something that I would ask Brady to help in this process as we move forward, and some of that identification so that we make sure that we don't cut Bob off from the servers and being able to perform their work in their office. So those are the four areas right now of concern that we would have to deal with when we look at how we're going to take this building out of the picture. Obviously, you know, I have the, a little bit of the utility background mainly in the electrical side, but as far as, you know, we need to get some experts in there to tell us, hey, we need to, you know, obviously, at a certain point when we get ready to take the big step forward, we're going to have to have some sort of a contingency for water, gas, and electric. So temporary services ran as we demolish and then reestablish the new services. That's going to take some work and some groundwork ahead of time before we're ready to tear in anything, per se, and obviously the infrastructure part, too.
Just for the boards, just so you recall, I know you passed the budget last month, but we appropriated $80,000 for the demo work. That's the whole project. So if we start getting some idea of what it would cost to relocate these utilities, I did think of a method to save a lot of money after those have been done, is utilize our own forced labor for the demolition, since they have some experience taking down the old building on the police site. Of course, with, before that would happen, we'd have to have all the proper testing for asbestos, et cetera, like we did for the police station. So that would save us a substantial lot of money because Bob can rent the larger equipment, and we need to utilize the CNE landfill, big 40-yard dumpsters to take the materials away. So that should save us a substantial amount of that budget anyways, right there. So that's my thoughts.
Well, I kind of brought it up because you brought it up last meeting, and I said, okay, this is the elephant in the room. So you're saying that in next year's budget, you have budgeted for 80,000 to...
Yes.
Okay.
There was 80,000 on the budget for demolition.
Okay.
And I did check with our Mark Fowler, we can't utilize any levied funds. He looked at the language of the fire and the police levies, and he said those are restricted. You can't use those for teardown, so.
And I think the 80,000, I mean, it was a placeholder.
It's a big number placeholder. Worst-case scenarios?
Yeah, because regardless of the decision that's made in the future on that building, I mean, doing nothing is a decision, and doing nothing is not going to make that building any better. And so something is going to have to be done eventually, and it's just a matter of when and what. And I think we've kind of resolved that there may be portions of that that are salvageable, Sally Port, maybe, you know, some adjoining rooms or building, but a lot of it is probably going to have to be demoed, and the utilities are the big issue that are going to have to be addressed. So we have no idea what it's going to cost, but I think anytime you can whittle it down is always good, but, so.
Yeah, I like your thought process, so I just think it's time to move forward.
I would agree. How soon could we get someone in to look at the utilities and give us an estimate as to what we're looking at, to have those separated so that everybody can continue to work? We don't have to worry about water pipes freezing in a building that's unoccupied, probably kept at a cooler temperature, you know, all those kinds of things.
Between Brady and myself, we try to walk through that building at least three times a week to make sure that the furnaces are working so that we don't have any unexpected surprises. We actually had the, by the way, you'll be getting a bill, the HVAC gentleman there today working on the heat pump unit, excuse me, that services the Sally Port, was having some difficulties and was freezing over, and so he was there working on that today to make sure that we had heat in that area. But between, like I said, between Brady and I, we just walk through there to make sure that no burst water pipes, the furnaces are running, everything's okay. We keep the temperature pretty minimal so we don't freeze anything, but we, just trying to make sure we don't come up with any surprises, you know, roof leaks, et cetera, that go unnoticed for weeks on end, and suddenly we have a major problem.
So the second part of that was, how soon can we get someone in?
I don't know what availabilities are nowadays. I think probably getting quotes will be faster than scheduling any of the work. So we can talk about that whenever you two are free next and start thinking about some, we know people who have done this before, so we could get together and try to get some scheduling of some contractors in for some quotes.
Didn't Dave King or, didn't he go through and do somewhat of a review and analysis?
It was a higher-level cost analysis for what the demo would be related to this question, so 60 to 80,000 figure was what was, but that was utilizing an outside contractor to demo it, so.
But as far as just going in and trying to fine-tune the cost and the logistics of moving that, would he have any ideas or thoughts?
He may, he may have sources of people that we can acquire to do the physical work.
Okay. All right. So any action? I don't think we need to take action. I think it's just a matter of, I mean, at some point you will, but I don't think we need anything tonight, so that's all I have. Thank you. Steve, let's come back to you for donation acceptance, I think.
Yeah, a couple more items. Going back to our K-9 program, we've retired Ben. I do not believe we need to purchase another patrol K-9 trained in drug bite work. Ben's activity the last couple of years has not really been high enough to warrant the need for another patrol K-9, and we can always have one respond from neighboring departments under mutual aid if needed. Also, with the marijuana laws being changed, drug-sniffing dogs are being phased out by many departments since dogs are trained to alert to several different drugs, but they cannot distinguish between them, so you can't say that the dog didn't alert to marijuana. So it becomes problematic in court. More concerning to me is the courts are taking a much dimmer view of police K-9s biting suspects. I believe that increases risk to the township, and any bite, no matter the circumstances, would look really bad on body cam video or any other video. I think it's just, it's risk versus reward, it's not worth it. So I'm proposing instead to transition to a therapy dog that would be based in the middle school with our SRO. We've seen a trend in the schools, mostly due to all the issues with the pandemic, where kids are more stressed out and having more mental health issues. Therapy dogs have been shown to be valuable in these situations and also make kids who may be afraid of the police to find officers more approachable. I have several letters of support for this program, and we've met with the Westerville School administrators to get their buy-in to this program. We met with the Assistant Superintendent Mental Health Team. We presented policies and information that they're presenting to Westerville School Board, who needs to formally give their approval to it. We anticipate that should happen very, very soon. We don't anticipate any problems with that, judging from some verbal talks we've had. They understand the therapy dog would also be taken to other schools in the township periodically and also be used at community events. I posted something on Facebook about this, and judging from the comments on Facebook, I think it has overwhelming support from our community members. The timeline would be obtaining, training, and integrating the therapy dog into the school would take several months to fully compete, complete, and we anticipate having the dog certified and fully operational by the beginning of the 2022 school year in September. I've selected our middle school SRO Officer Jason Burner to be our handler. Jason has been the middle school SRO for the last six years and has 13 years' experience as a dog handler. After researching dog breeders, we have selected Rock Mill Labradors from Patascala, based on feedback from other therapy dog handlers and interaction with some of their dogs. They have a puppy available currently that we believe would be a great fit, a yellow Labrador Retriever for a cost of $2,500, and we've received a $2,500 donation from the J-Day Enterprises LLC to defray that cost, and they have indicated they plan to donate more, so there should be no cost to the taxpayers. I really believe this will be a great benefit to the township and our schoolchildren. Plan to evaluate the program and also consider adding a second therapy dog to the high school if this is as successful as I anticipate, and we also have a commitment that that would also be through private donations. So I don't need any formal resolution on the therapy dog program, just any, if you have any comments or thoughts or discussion on that. But then a part of that is to accept the resolution to accept the $2,500 donation from J-Day Enterprises LLC, which they have so graciously given to us.
I'll go ahead and do the motion, then we can talk about the whole issue if you'd like. I will move to graciously accept a donation from J-Day Enterprises LLC in the amount of $2,500 for the purchase of a therapy dog for Genoa Township Police Department. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded, discussion on the motion or the concept. Steve, I think it's a good idea personally. You know, I, the K-9 program has been successful. I always get nervous when we have the K-9s at especially community events.
I do, too.
Ben hasn't been as bad as, you know, Gandolph, but they've done well, and I think the people love him, and I think having a lab, a therapy dog would just be an added benefit, so. And if you're saying from a law enforcement standpoint, the bite dog, drug dog concept is not as important, then...
I don't think we have a need for it here in the township.
Do we have any...
Based on the activity.
Yeah, excuse me. Do we have any, is there any, there are K-9s at the county level, aren't there?
Yes, and through mutual aid if we need one, we can request them.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Good. So Connie?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, too, and the fact that we can share with the mutual aid process should we need that type of dog, that's fine. I will say, it's no wonder you got such great comments on that picture you posted. That was the cutest puppy I've ever seen, so.
It's messed into my madness.
Marketing.
But no, I'm fine with it.
Will this dog be a regular attendee at the middle school, did you say?
Yes, and the plan would be... Yes, and the plan would be, as we progress towards getting the dog certified, uh, if, if everything gets approved through the Westerville School Board, the dog would start probably in January, just going into the office with Officer Burner, but not interacting with any students, just so the dog can start getting acclimated to the sounds and smells of the school, school bells and all that. But we'll just stay there, and then slowly, as he trains the dog up, get more integrated into the schools.
So, it primarily will be in the middle school?
Primarily based out of the middle school, but if there's a need over, over the high school or the elementary schools, or really, any school in Westerville, since it's part of the Westerville School District, uh, they can go.
Chief, if, if we need him here in the office, I know sometimes Joe has some bad zoning meetings, and he, he may need the therapy dog.
We can, we can put Joe on the list.
Okay.
I'll bring Zeke in. Where's he live?
Who would live, live with Officer Burner?
Who?
Who's, again, had our K-9s over many years.
And then, um, why are you starting in the middle school?
That's a good question. I think, uh, Officer Burner came up with this initiative, um, and looking at his experience with dogs, understanding how dogs work, the psychology of dogs, his, all of his years as an SRO at the middle school, um, and him seeing what he's been seeing, you know, he said, there are a lot of kids that are afraid to come to school, and when we get out of parents' cars, they're just really stressed out. This last eighteen months has been very, very difficult on kids. So, I, I think that's why we decided to start there.
Okay. Thank you. One more question?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know we, we talked previously about the cruiser that Ben has been using. And are we going to, I, I can't remember, are we going to have, um, Officer Burner use that cruiser with this dog until the cruiser's kaput, or?
Yeah. Yeah, and really, um, the needs, as far as a cruiser, is much less with a therapy dog than a regular dog. We don't need the, um, the door opener, and we don't need all, just, um, a seat in back and also the temperature control. So, we'll use the current K-9 car. Um, and if we, if we get the second dog in the high school, we'll just retrofit a cruiser. There shouldn't be any significant cost. And again, I anticipate all that would be through private donations from the commitments, what I've heard of.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, and I would also, uh, I mean, the motion says it, but again, thank the J-Day Enterprises, uh, for their continued, uh, support of, um, the police and the fire and just the township. So, uh, uh, we greatly appreciate that. So, anything else? Roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
And the last thing I have is I received an email from Sergeant Shane Frye asking to voluntarily step down as a sergeant and return to a patrol officer position in the police department effective, uh, ele, effective eleven twenty of twenty... November tw- twenty-first of 2021.
Okay, very good. Uh, I will move to accept the voluntary demotion of Sergeant Shane Frye to patrol officer with the Genoa Township Police Department, effective November twenty-first, 2021. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion, roll call.
Yes.
Yes, motion carries.
The other thing I was going to mention is, um, since our last meeting, we've, we've had a couple incidents that have occurred at night, um, that have caused public concern, police activity in the area. Um, and I know we've got a lot of inquiries on what's going on, was a helicopter over the township, et cetera. Um, and I've tried from home to try to update people on Facebook as much as possible, but it's difficult to do. I, I do want to make people aware that through Delaware County EMA, there's a system called Delco Alerts that you can sign up for. It's kind of a reverse 911 where they can send out messages, emails, texts, anytime there's a situation going on, whether it be police activity, fire, weather, um, any need for evacuations. It's easy to sign up for that. I do plan on putting something on our Facebook page on that and try to get some information out on how to sign up. That way, we can ask our dispatchers to put out an alert, and they can notify people in the area, because I know people generally get concerned when they see a lot of activity going on.
Chief, also, I, I saw a program in one store that I work at part-time. We've started to see an increase in shoplifting, but also the, uh, famed porch pirates are going to be at it, uh, over the next couple of weeks, I'm sure, with, uh, so we may want to put something out just reminding people about package deliveries and utilizing neighbors and ring doorbells and whatever. But it is apparently on the increase, especially on the smash-and-grab type, uh, stuff that's been going around too. So, it's very unfortunate, but it's that time of year, so. All right. Thanks, chief. Anything else? You're good. Joe, you have, uh, anything tonight? Well, here's an exec session, right? Okay, sir. Bob?
The only thing I got is, we had a risk manager tell us about the playground equipment, the wood structure at, uh, Himlar. We made the repairs in the spring, but since then, the wood has rotted more, and it's totally unsafe now, so I wanted to let the board know we're going to remove that, uh, wood structure so nobody ends up getting hurt on it.
Okay, very good.
That's all I got.
That's all you got? All right. You got, uh, snowplows are attached, or are we, uh, rolling the dice on that?
Uh, we've been rolling the dice. But we, uh, did some prep today, and we're going to do some more prep tomorrow, because they're saying we might get something Tuesday, so.
Okay, all right. Well, we have all the confidence.
We will be ready.
You, you will be ready. I'm sure you will be. All right, thank you. Anything else, Paul? Okay. We got, uh, we, we'll have an exec session, but before that, announcements. December seventh is the Fire Advisory Committee, December thirteenth, Zoning Commission, December fourteenth, BZA, December twenty-third and fourth, the offices will be closed. December thirty-first, the offices will be closed. January fifth is the Parks Advisory Committee, and the next regular trustee meeting will be January sixth, and that will be the reorganization meeting. So, at this time, unless there's any further business, I will move to adjourn to executive session at seven twenty-one PM to consider the compensation dismissal of a public employee. Is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded discussion, roll call. Goodman?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. We stand adjourned into executive session at seven twenty-one PM.
Everyone on? All right. At this time, I will move to come out of executive session into our regular trustee meeting. The time is 8:21 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded discussion, roll call.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes. Motion carries. We are now back in the regular trustee meeting. Any other business come before the board? Hearing none, I will move to adjourn this meeting at 8:21 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded discussion, roll call.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Yes.